Good morning, everyone. We will call the commission to order. Our purpose of meeting today is to discuss the proposed franchise as put forth by Century Link and your negotiating committee. And so I would like to, this is a public hearing, and so what I would like to do is, first of all, have our attorney, Mr. Bradley, give an overview of things. And then after that, I would like to call for a motion to open a public hearing to take input from residents and other interested individuals. So, Mr. Bradley, do you want to start out?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everybody. First of all, I'd like to just thank a few people here before we get going. This has been a long process here in negotiating the franchise with Century Link, and I did want to thank the commission first for asking our firm to help your organization negotiate this franchise. I'd specifically like to thank the negotiating committee and Mike Johnson for all of their assistance in getting us through the negotiating process and getting this franchise before you today. And then internally, of course, Adrian Herbst and Leslie Saporito have been tremendous assistance to me as all of us have been going forward in these negotiations. And finally, I'd like to thank Patrick Haggerty and Century Link and Tyler Middleton, of course, for all of their efforts in getting us to where we are today. I did prepare a PowerPoint presentation, which unfortunately for Century Link is directly behind them.[121.42][121.42](Laughter). But anyway, I did want to go through a few things, just to kind of remind all of you the process that we've been following, talk a little bit about the cable franchise itself, and then talk about the next steps that you'll be able to take now. So to give you a reminder of the process that we've followed, from the time Century Link asked the commission to consider a cable franchise application, the commission initially published a notice of intent to franchise, which is required by state statute. After that, Century Link submitted a cable franchise application. Once that happened, then the commission asked Leslie Saporito to prepare an application analysis, which was done, and eventually it was received and filed by the commission, and the commission authorized staff to negotiate, staff and the negotiating committee, to negotiate a cable franchise. Some of the things that we consider in these competitive cable franchises here in Minnesota is, you know, there's kind of a number of things, but these are kind of the high-level kind of top considerations that are, that go into these discussions. One is how to address the build-out of each member city. Remember that Century Link has already built out, really, all of your member cities with a legacy communication system. And when we're talking about building out, we're really talking about Century Link upgrading its facilities to allow it to provide video service on its existing system, and in some cases, upgrading new facilities all the way to the premises. Prohibiting cherry picking or economic redlining, so not allowing a company to just focus on perhaps wealthier areas of a city, but having the system being provided to a broad base of subscribers throughout every member city. In Minnesota, there's a level playing field statute in the cable, in the cable chapter on cable franchising. And that level playing field requires that the franchises between an incumbent franchise, which is Comcast, and then the new franchise, which in this case is Century Link, they have to be substantially similar in three primary areas, and that's franchise fees, area served, and then PEG requirements. And then another consideration is the incumbents' cable franchise, which is the Comcast franchise. So all of these things have been, you know, in the mix of our discussions all throughout this time. A couple of significant issues that we had to get over first was how to address the build-out. And the reason why that's a challenging issue is because there's a state statute in place that requires that initial cable franchises have language that basically say that a, the cable operator has to build out its entire system, you know, within five years and so many plant miles a year. Century Link had indicated that they felt that that language was preempted by federal law and federal rules. And in the initial application analysis, and then again in the staff report that is in your packet today, they provided what we thought was a good faith basis for that argument. And in addition to that, Century Link agreed to indemnify the commission if there was any litigation on that or any other issue surrounding the granting of this franchise. And so with those protections in mind, we deviated from that, that build requirement. But that leaves you still with the, with the federal law requirement of having the ability to have a reasonable build-out provision in your cable franchise. And that's what we focused on for the, for the build-out. So when we turn then to the, to the build-out of the cable system, in the cable franchise, the goal then is to have service being provided to all of your member cities and your entire member, you know, the entirety of each member city over the next five years. So during this five-year term, the build-out goal is to, is for everybody to receive cable service. It is, however, based on, on the market-based success that Century Link has over the next five years in competing against Comcast. So then the reason why it's based on a market-based success model is because the FCC, in an order from 2007 that addressed cable, competitive cable franchising, has said that in addressing reasonable build-out of a city, it's, it is reasonable to consider market-based success. And so that's why we chose that particular model. As part of the build-out, there is a requirement that there be a significant investment targeted to, to all areas of the city, including areas below the median income of each member city. So that kind of addresses that economic redlining argument. So the initial build-out commitment is 15% of each member city over the first two years. And I've said this before, this is, this was lower than frankly we would have liked when we initially started looking at these cable franchises, but I can tell you that this is the model that's being used throughout the Twin Cities. I can also tell you that Century Link would not agree to anything above that initial build of 15%. But there are provisions that we'll go over here shortly that allow an accelerated build over time, again, based on market-based success. But with that, that initial build is 15% of each of your member cities over the first two years of the franchise. They have to use their best efforts to do it in a shorter period of time. There's an equitable deployment to all households in the city and has to include a significant number of households below the median income, and Century Link is permitted to serve more than that 15%. And of course, we want to encourage that 100% of households get served in your member cities. There'll be quarterly meetings, so you'll start hearing about quarterly meetings now, assuming that a franchise is granted to Century Link. Starting in January of 2017, although we may want to push that out because if we take action that approves the franchise, the, this franchise won't become effective, I think, until November 26th. So we're not going to get a lot of information on January 1. But the commitment is, starting in January, we'll have quarterly meetings with Century Link. At those quarterly meetings, Century Link will come in and, and show exactly where they're providing service, what their penetration rates are, what the number of, what number of households below the median income are being served by Century Link at the present time. They'll also show, you know, what their expectations are for, you know, moving forward into the following quarter. So it's a good opportunity to see exactly where they are. They will provide some maps showing where they are, so you'll get an idea of, you know, where people are able to receive service, where we think service will be brought in the near future, and then where there's still work to be done. So you'll see all of that in these, in these quarterly meetings. And they're very helpful because you also can talk about, you know, any issues that are coming up, if there's any customer service issues that need to be addressed, it's just a nice check-in with a, with a new operator. Those quarterly meetings are also the basis for a provision for accelerated, an accelerated build-out of your, of your member cities. So the example that we use in your franchise is that if, if Century Link comes in and shows that they've already exceeded that 15% number, let's say they've, they've, they've hit 60%, and they're having market-based success, which is a 27.5% penetration rate, you know, within that, within that 60%, if they hit those numbers, so they're showing market-based success, they're having, they're at a level that's higher than that 15% already, then that, that build-out will accelerate then. It'll take the 60% baseline and then put another 15% build-out commitment on, on Century Link, and so then they'll be required to serve 75%. So there's, there's a built-in acceleration of the build-out in the cable franchise. There's no line extension policies unless Century Link becomes the dominant provider, which means they have more cable subscribers than any other franchise cable operator. Economic redlining is absolutely prohibited under federal law. We also have provisions in the cable franchise that prohibit it. We have an additional damage provision that addresses redlining and build-out. So we think we've, you know, we've, we've addressed that issue adequately. On level playing field, like I said, there's, there's three areas under the state statute that we, that we look at. One is franchise fees, one's area served, and one are the PEG requirements. The franchise fees have Century Link paying the same percentage of gross revenues as Comcast, so they're, they're essentially identical. The area served is also comparable to the Comcast franchise in that the area being authorized to be served are the entire areas of all of your member cities, the entire corporate The PEG requirements are a little bit different between the, between the companies, but we think overall they balance out and are fair to both companies. The, the number of access channels that Century Link will be providing to the commission is 13. That's actually a greater number of access channels than Comcast provides. Part of the reason for that is there's some narrowcasting that goes on, and I'm sure you're all familiar with narrowcasting. I'll try to, for the public's sake, try to identify what narrowcasting is. But essentially, there is a channel on Comcast's system. Let's just say it's Channel 18, and I'm not sure, I don't remember which channel it is. But, and that channel is dedicated to each member city. So everybody gets a Channel 18 in my example, but it's different. So each member city sees a different feed. Century Link isn't able to do that. And so the solution that they have is to provide a channel for each of those member cities. So those feeds will go out to all of the member cities and in fact across the entire metro area with those access feeds. The format of the access channels is also different than what Comcast provides. Comcast provides, I think, up to two access channels in high definition. Century Link is capable of providing all of your access channels in high definition. So I'm sure you've all been around, and the commission has probably wanted for years to be, to be all high definition, and now we have a company here that's willing to provide all of your access television channels in high definition. There's an electronic programming guide commitment. This, this commitment is different than Comcast's commitment. Comcast provides detailed programming on electronic programming guide. Century Link is providing us that capability, but is not providing the cost for that. So that is a difference between the two cable franchises. The channel placement is, is another difference. All of our access channels will be available through Channel 49, which will be called the Northwest Mosaic Channel. And, and through that Channel 49, you'll be able to access all 13 of the access channels in kind of a picture-in-picture type of format on the, on the Century Link system. In addition to the access channels, you'll also be able to, you'll also be able to receive the local origination channel. And then all of those access channels will physically be located in the 8,000 tier of channels, and that's where all of the access channels for the entire Twin Cities area are located. It is kind of a neat deal with, with Century Link in that you can receive the, the access channels from all of the cities across the metro on your TV in, in a franchised area. So if a franchise is granted to Century Link here and you start to receive their service, you'll be able to see the access channels in the city of Minneapolis, city of St. Paul, Coon Rapids, Shakopee, all over the, all over the Twin Cities. So it's kind of a neat, something that's very different than what you receive with Comcast right now. Some additional access requirements, there's a PSA requirement. Video on demand has been an issue for many, many years. You, you have a, you have some video on demand with Comcast now. I think it's five hours of SD, standard definition, programming. This far exceeds that. They're, they're providing 25 hours of video on demand for every member city, so that ends up being 225 hours of video on demand programming, and it's not limited to SD programming. And finally, the, the PEG support. The PEG support is going to be identical for subscribers when they're paying their bill. Comcast charges subscribers $1.43, and that's exactly what Century Link will be charging its subscribers and paying to the, to the commission. The local origination channel is something that's fairly unique to this commission area, and we were able to negotiate a, a local origination channel in kind of similar terms to how Comcast is providing that local origination channel. It will be on Channel 241. It will be seen by, again, members of the public or Century Link cable subscribers throughout the Twin Cities metropolitan area. So that channel now will have a much broader audience than it currently has. It'll also be seen on the Northwest Mosaic, like I said, on Channel 49, but it'll also be able to be pulled up through other mosaics that Century Link has, such as their news mosaic and their sports mosaic. So some really kind of different and unique things that are going into the local origination channel as well. And then finally, Century Link will be paying for the detailed electronic programming guide information for the, for the local origination channel. One of the very unique things that have been negotiated here is the Twin Cities Metro PEG Interconnect Network. That's a network that Century Link has agreed to construct to allow PEG stations or access channel programmers to share live programming with one another. So the example that I've, I've used in the past is, is sports programming. So if we have a sports, a high school sports team that's playing in another area, let's say Roseville, and Roseville's covering that game, the commission will have the ability to pick up that programming live and put it on its own channel. So subscribers in this area will be able to go to the channel it normally goes to for sports programming and pick it up that way. It's a very unique arrangement for, for PEG operators. We're very fortunate here, I think, in the Twin Cities to have a very vibrant PEG community or access television community, and, and Century Link, you know, I think recognized that and then did a, did some really hard work to make this, this happen. So this is not a, an inexpensive project that, that Century Link is going through, and hopefully it'll be widely utilized by the PEG operators here in the Twin Cities. I can tell you, in speaking around the country on competitive franchising, this is the envy of a lot of communities across the country. They're very interested in, in how this works. Century Link's also agreed to provide complementary broadband to one location within each member city. That each member city will have a choice of, of where that location will be, but they will need to work with Mike Johnson, and they'll need to work with Century Link as well. So there'll need to be some communication there as far as what location it'll be at. You know, and part of that will be centered around where Century Link can provide service right now and what kind of speeds. But it is, it'll be free broadband, it'll also be free Wi-Fi equipment at these, at these locations. And so there's the possibility of having free 1G internet speeds at these locations, but it's not guaranteed to be 1G. I've kind of already gone through a lot of the comparisons, so I'm not going to go over these slides in real detail because we've really already gone over them. But the franchises, when you compare the Comcast franchise to the Century Link franchise, they are very similar documents, with some of the exceptions that I've kind of gone over already this morning. The term of the cable franchise is going to be different in that we've kept the Century Link term to five years. The, the real reason for that is, is to keep an eye on the, the build-out of the, of the cable franchise, to make sure that all members of the public in these member cities are getting served. And with that shorter term, we'll be able to go into renewal, you know, in a, a little bit sooner than we would with a longer-term franchise, and if, if we need to address build-out differently at that time, then we can explore that. Customer service is similar. There is that identification provision that I touched on that Century Link is providing that Comcast does not provide. I've already gone over the access commitments. There is also a provision on serving public buildings in the cable franchise. The penalties are very similar between the, the two operators, but like I mentioned before, there is one additional penalty provision for Century Link related to redlining and, and build-out. And then, of course, the build-out provisions, I went into ad nauseam, so I won't bore you with those again. And we really have gone over all of these as well. So our next steps then is to hold this public hearing. So after, after my presentation, we'll, we'll ask Century Link if it has any remarks that it would like to make, and then it'll be opened to the public for any public testimony. At which time, the public hearing will be closed, and then the commission will have the opportunity to consider the cable franchise of Century Link. If it decides to, if the commission decides to grant a franchise to Century Link, there, there's a publication requirement. So the soonest that, that the franchise can be published is on October 27th. That'll be within the 15 days of granting the franchise, if that's the will of the commission. And then the franchise becomes effective 30 days after that publication date, which is Saturday, November 26th. And I think that's, I think that's it. So if there's any questions, me, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Century Link, have any comments?
Thank you. My name is Tyler Middleton. I'm Century Link's Vice President of Operations for Minnesota. Just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to be here. Century Link made the decision back in, actually it was early 2014 already, to bring choice and competition in the cable market to the Twin Cities, and initiated an awful lot of activities back in that time to start talking to the various, as it turns out, 72 cities in the greater Twin Cities area, to build the, the video headends, to bring the content, both national, local content into this marketplace, and to start the ramp-up of systems and, and resources and people to prepare for that launch. And so in June of 2015, we were fortunate enough to have the first city of, the city of Minneapolis be the first city to, to bring Prism Television to this marketplace. And throughout that process, and to this day, we've continued the process to invest what has been hundreds of millions of dollars to, in the overall operation and capital involved in bringing it to this market. And very proud to say at this time, we now have, in advance of, of this commission, we've got 42 of those cities have ordinances in place where we are offering service. By the end of this year, our expectation is that we will have enabled right around 400,000 households out of 1.1 million in the greater Twin Cities area capable of carrying Prism through both the, the technology and where that overlays where the franchises happen to be. So we've been very, very busy installing new customers. I think it's been a very successful rollout. It's, it's met our, our, our business objectives from that perspective, and we're just real pleased to be here and have the opportunity to serve the Northwest Urban Cable Commission as well. So we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to have a formal motion to open the public hearing to take input from the public.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Been made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carries. Again, this is a public hearing. We're seeking input from any individuals that do want to respond to this proposed franchise agreement. This is the first time since, I believe, 1984 that we've had this opportunity to take a look at another franchise agreement. The last, the last one we did consider was WH Link, but that was for Plymouth and Maple Grove, and that was the cherry picking. They only wanted to go into certain exclusive neighborhoods, and certainly that didn't fit the legal obligation. So this is a good experience for us since 1984. It's been, been a long time. So we'd like to have input from the public that would like to comment on this proposed franchise. We have a microphone in the corner there. If you wish to speak, give us your name and address for the record, and we'll take your Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Good morning. I'm a board member with the rest of you, Scott Perdett. I'd like to hear more information on the cable guide, what we are required to provide on the cable guide, as opposed to just say, you know, there was much information there, and that's actually very, very critical.
I can address that, Mr. Chair. There's There's, there's two pieces to that electronic programming guide. First, on the local origination channel, CenturyLink will, will pay for, for the detailed programming listings for that, for that local origination channel. So, just like you see with broadcast television, you'll see the, the segments, as long, as we provide them, to the third-party provider. As you may know, the cable operators use, you know, they don't do the electronic programming guide themselves, they hire somebody else to do them. So, what they do is they put our organization in touch with their third-party provider. They help coordinate that, you know, that initial handoff so that we're able to provide that detailed information to the third-party provider. So, so at the end of the day, what CenturyLink is paying for is for that detailed segmented programming guide for the local origination channel. On the access channels themselves, we'll still have that opportunity to provide segmented, detailed programming guide information, but that cost will be a cost to the commission.
Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Dave Carlson with YZ Public Schools in Plymouth. I just wanted a clarification, please, of the number of access channels. You said 13, but if each city gets one, that's nine. The YZ and Robbinsdale School District share one, so there'd be another one, and the Ossio School District has an educational access channel, so that leaves only two. But there are more than that right now with the current franchise. Is the local origination channel not included in that number?
It is not. The local origination channel is not included in that number.
Okay, so there would be two remaining for Northwest Community TV.
Any other comments?
Mark McGuire, Crystal, 4611 Xenia for the address. I had a question. What is the infrastructure that you're, I guess, going to build out? Is it fiber optic cables that is going to provide the Prism TV? And if so, isn't there already fiber optic cable already for internet and can that carry both?
Yes, it's a good question. As Mr. Bradley indicated, we've got a, obviously a legacy network in the area, and Prism Television is delivered over our IP network, our internet network. So it's a combination of utilizing what it was called our fiber-to-the-node architecture, which is kind of fiber in the backbone and then copper to the home.
Okay.
So long as it's been prepared for the Prism service and has speeds at 25 megabits per second or greater. Or, it can operate over our, our newer fiber-to-the-home network, which has taken that same fiber backbone and extended fiber all the way to the household. So it's, it's kind of architecture independent in that regard, and really wherever, in the net of it, wherever we can offer 25 megabits or greater. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I'm too short. I hope you can do it. My name is Zippora Missesi, board member and a producer at the Northwest Community Television for six years. My show plays in four different stations, and I love it that Northwest is my original station, and I want to maintain that. On sharing the programs, it has been my, I took it as a challenge to send to the three other stations apart, apart from Northwest, either online or DVD, and I'm glad that they always play my show. Sharing the program, and I wanted to know if they're, Northwest is playing my show 4:00 on Monday, will, can I tell the other stations also to do that? Because I, I doubt whether they can do that, because there could be something else that's going to play at 4:00. Just wanted to know, is this going to help me not to worry anymore to send my shows to the other stations, or I still have to continue sending my show to the other stations?
Mr. Chair, I can answer that. Zippora, the Commissioner, Missesi, we, because the unique infrastructure of CenturyLink allows us to, through this mosaic, basically, in this case, everybody would be able to see your program if it airs out of this building who has CenturyLink Prism TV service. And whatever time you play it here would be the time that it would air all over the Twin Cities. So it's, it's a huge plus for community producers, that they can see it simultaneously at that time slot.
Good, so that relieves me, having to send to the other stations.
Yes.
I like that. I like it secretly.
Yeah. Yes, of course, unless they're Comcast customers only, then you would still have to, so.
Any other comments from the public? If not, oh, we've got one more up here.
Sorry. One other question. The fiber-to-the-home, as a CenturyLink subscriber currently, who provides the cost of running it all the way to the home? Is it the homeowner or CenturyLink?
But wherever we are provisioning it, we, we pay for the cost all the way to the home.
Any other comments? Any other comments? If not, don't entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carries. We have two motions that need to be made based on the affirmative review by the commission. The first one, as proposed by Mr. Bradley, is a motion to receive and file the staff report dated October 20, 2016, including the exhibits. So I would like to have a motion to that effect.
Second.
Bill, Jim, or Jim and Bill? Any other comments on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The second motion's a little bit longer. Bear with me. The second motion would be to approve the cable franchise ordinance and agreement with CenturyLink, approve the findings of fact contained in the packet, approve the ordinance summary contained in the packet, and direct the executive director to publish the ordinance summary.
So, I would like to make that motion and add on to it and direct signature of all required documents by our appropriate officers and employees.
Okay, so noted. Is there a second to that? Motion's been made and seconded with that addition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I want to thank CenturyLink, and realize it's been since 2014, but I don't know what we're going to do now for fun, but we'll figure out something. I want to thank, yes?
Glad, I just had a question. You can finish your statement, but...
No, I was just going to thank Leslie, Mike and Mike, Dave, our entire great staff, and I want to thank the negotiating committee for the hours that were put forth working out this franchise agreement. So I appreciate everybody's hard work and dedication, and appreciate the hard work and dedication by the commission as a whole. So thank you very much, yeah.
Well, this is for CenturyLink. You know, in our city of Crystal, we're having some street reconstruction projects, and I'm just wondering, like, next spring, for instance, the streets are going to be dug up around the airport area. Is that an opportunity to come in and put in some lines, you know, at a less reduced cost with, I mean, are you working with the, the cities in the area as they're doing the street reconstruction to see if you can increase coverage areas?
Well, I don't...
When the infrastructure's already being worked on?
Yeah. That's a, that's a good suggestion. We frequently work with the cities. I don't know specific to Crystal, but typically the city engineers are in touch with our engineering and planning teams, and if the opportunity presents itself where we can, we can take advantage of that, then we need to know, well, you know, far enough in advance that we can plan for it and see if it makes sense from a business perspective.
I'm going to talk.
All right.
Thank you.
Julie?
I was just wondering, do you have an idea about viewership? Will people just be changing from Comcast to CenturyLink, or do you see an increase of viewership? And do you, have you thought about what that might be?
Well, I think what's, and maybe CenturyLink can also answer this question too, is basically what they're going to have to do is win customers, or I think you used the term win customers away from, from Comcast. Obviously, there are probably subscribers out there, or people who are not subscribing to cable. Maybe they, at one point, they dropped Comcast for whatever reason, but through CenturyLink's marketing efforts and advertising and so forth and so on, and pricing, people might come on, you know, back onboard to say a landline type cable service versus just getting satellite service or whatever. So it, it's, we're not, as it stands right now, we're not expecting a huge increase in the number of subscribers because it's, there could be a lot of this trade-out one for one. If they win a customer from Comcast, then it's kind of revenue neutral for us, if that makes sense.
We just had, did a city survey in Golden Valley, and we were, Northwest Television wasn't as high in the percent of people that watched it, which kind of goes along with what we've heard. And I'm just hoping that maybe bringing another alternative will be able to increase the viewership back, you know, up, so...
Right, because remember about roughly, the, the penetration rate of cable services in the Northwest suburbs is a little over 50%. So, in, in every one of your cities, there's at least nearly half of the people don't have a landline service. Now that could grow with CenturyLink, so we'll see.
Another opportunity. Because I do know that over the last couple of years, there has been a, a big interest in having a choice here. And people not happy with Comcast and they want a choice. And I think this is going to be very positive because competition never hurts anybody. And I hope both CenturyLink and Comcast step up to the plate and, you know, give us a good service in our communities, because I think with one, it's just not as, you know, you're, you're the only one, you don't have to try as hard. So I think this is going to be a positive endeavor, and thank you very much.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if I may, not only add to the question those answered, but first, I'd like to thank the commission as well. I've spent a lot of hours at this location. They've been mostly enjoyable, but what I have taken away from it is this is an extremely engaged commission, very professional, very representative of their communities, and that's both respected and admired. As Tyler pointed out, we've done 42 of these, so I've had my experiences around this, and it was a pleasure to work with this commission, Mr. Bradley and Mrs. Sapparito. To add to your, you, you had asked about an increase in viewership, but one thing I might just add to Mr. Johnson's comments and Mr. Bradley had pointed out is, we broadcast, we don't narrowcast. So I think the opportunity for subscribers outside of your independent communities to see your programming is going to be incredible. An opportunity to market your communities outside of the community, so people in, residents in other cities outside of Maple Grove or, would be able to see the programming. So I do think there'll be an increase in viewership and an opportunity for this commission to really promote what happens in the member cities of this commission and bring interest to that.
Thank you, Patrick. Bills?
So I have a question about our relative size in the Twin Cities. This nine-member community now, where will we rank? Let's just say everybody has the exact same penetration rate throughout the Twin Cities. Will we be behind Minneapolis and St. Paul as third, or will we be in second place? Or how, how large are we as compared to everybody else of your 42 communities?
It's a good question, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and it's actually almost incredible. The, the nine-member cities of this commission will fall between Minneapolis and St. Paul, a little bit smaller than Minneapolis itself, but larger than St. Paul. So this is a significant day for CenturyLink and Tyler and I. This is a big one.
Julie?
I just have one more question. When will you start kind of marketing to the community that you're going to be available to sell the...
It's, that's a good question, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As Mr. Bradley had pointed out, the effective date for the franchise is October 26th. We have households currently ready to flip the switch, as people might say. Once we've done that, which will be very shortly after the effective date, in fact, we'll go to work on preparing to do that now. Residents that can subscribe to the service will begin receiving direct mail flyers within weeks of, of that effective date. And that'll be a way for residents to, to know whether or not they can subscribe, would be that they've received direct mail promoting the product. The other way that residents can determine whether or not they can subscribe to services through our website, CenturyLink.com. They can submit their address to the website. The website will immediately provide a response as to whether they do or do not are enabled to, to receive the service. And if they are not enabled to receive the service, they can submit their email address so that as we do enable additional households, they would be notified that they now qualify.
So is it October 26th or November 26th?
November.
Oh, November, I'm sorry. Wishful thinking.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, anything else to come before the commission, Mike?
Not before the commission. Again, I would like to thank both Mike Bradley and Leslie Sapparito as well, the entire negotiating committee, the commission, and definitely CenturyLink, working with your firm has, we've gotten through it. It's been a long time, but we're very excited that it's finally come to fruition, so thank you very much.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn the commission meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are done. Commission part.
Which brings us to the Board of Directors' meeting. So, I would call the Board of Directors' meeting to order, and we were here a month ago talking about branding, I think it was a month ago, and thank you to the committee that got together to get more acquainted. I really appreciated reading the, the notes of that meeting and kind of getting us all up to date on the branding. So, do you have an update?
Yes, Madam Chair. Today, we're, we're hoping that the NWCT Board will just take action on this rebranding effort. And in fact, today, you know, this is a historic moment, having CenturyLink here, because now we're not only going to be on one cable system, we're going to be on two. And it all started when we were talking about channels and channel numbers and confusion with channels and kind of getting away from the channel aspect. So now with CenturyLink being official in terms of some competition in the Northwest suburbs and a provider, this is a perfect time to go through this, this rebrand. Of course, this approval would be contingent upon legal review and trademark review by an attorney, so we want to make that clear. And also, we want to say that we're very excited to move forward with this rebrand strategy. And I want to recognize all, all of our staff and Dave Kaiser for, we're Dave back there, for organizing and coordinating all this effort. There's just been a lot of work from staff on this. Of course, all the city communications coordinators, Helen LaFave, who's on our board, Cheryl Wyler, who's on our board, and then all the other communications coordinators at all the other cities. And then, of course, all the Cable Commission, NWC Board members who offered their input on the process. And then finally, final thank you to Cindy Linus from CEL Marketing and Public Relations in Plymouth, and Scott Rogers for all their work. So, we're, we're very excited to bring forth this connected community experience rebrand forward, and remember that Northwest Community Television, the operating name would stay the same. It's just the rebrand of the, the programming, and we're, we're very excited to move forward with this.
Scott, you want to join us up here at the board, or you're going to? So, I know we had a, a kind of lively discussion at the last meeting. We had a nice presentation. I don't know if all of you were here and remember the graphics and everything, so you're just looking for a motion?
Yep.
If, if someone's comfortable in making that motion to move forward with the rebranding?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I should have asked if there was discussion. I'm sorry, Rex.
I'm, I'm, I'll be voting no, simply because the CCX brand is so generic, it has to be meaningless, and I'm just not ready to sacrifice the 35-year history of the existing brand.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there, we voted, but was there anyone else that wanted to make any comments? I'm sorry about that. Okay, so we're moving forward with our rebranding, and is there anything else on our agenda?
That's it, Madam Chair?
That's it, so motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move? Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.